Oh, they clean? Yeah. How do they clean? Stick here?
For a helicar?
Yeah, no, no, can't have shabby. Can't have dusty. Are we waiting or are we gonna go?
I'm the nature person.
Oh, question.
Yeah. Pledge of Allegiance, let's do it.
Let's do it.
Michael said he might be late. Oh, he said at Eastlake then. That is daughter.
Good evening, thank you all so much for joining us this evening. If you'll please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance which is being led tonight by Jordan Alacon, who is a 2017 Montwood graduate and a college worker here at SISD.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay, we will continue with item number three, our superintendent's comments, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Nahara and members of the board. I'm very, very proud to introduce the newest members of our elite leadership team here at SISD and so as I call your name, please stand to be recognized. Starting off with new assistant principal at Americas High School, Ms. Raquel Alba. Also, new assistant principal at Puente's Middle School, Mr. Vincent Thomas. New principal at O'Shea Elementary, Ms. Laura Garcia. And new principal at Rojas Elementary, Ms. Jackie Salas. Ms. Ruth Taylor is the new assistant principal at Enzer Middle School. And Mr. Benjamin Ortega is new assistant principal at Montwood High School. Now, at SISD, we hire the best and the brightest, so congratulations to all these outstanding, outstanding leaders. Can't wait to see all the wonderful impact that you'll have in your, at your school community, so congratulations. Alright, so we've had an exciting week since all of our employees returned yesterday, Monday, July 23rd, and I look forward, look forward to personally welcoming over 3,500 faculty and staff back for another successful school year during our third annual DNA conference tomorrow at Eastlake High School. So they'll be there tomorrow at Eastlake High School. We have over 6,000 plus employees, but our amazing teachers, they'll be there tomorrow at Eastlake High School, so looking forward to tomorrow. But we're also anxious to welcome back our students next Monday, which is July 30th, and to accommodate the growth that we've had in our school district the last several years, we're excited to open up a new elementary school, as many of y'all may know, which is Sergeant Jose Carrasco Elementary. And I don't believe he's here, but Mr. Jesse Sepulveda, who's a proud, proud principal of Carrasco, him and his staff are eager to open their doors to over 600, 700 students on Monday morning. So these are very exciting times in SISD, and we look forward to having another, another breakout year that will continue to prove that we are a destination school district. So a huge thank you to our board members and our entire school committee for their support. President Nahara, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Before we move on, I would like to recognize, we have two board members joining us tonight. We have Armando Rodriguez from Canatillo ISD. And Alva Lardy from El Paso ISD. Thank y'all all for joining us and we will be hearing from them later in the evening. Okay, we will move on with item number four, special presentations, Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. Our first special presentation will recognize a Socorro High School Administrator for being named the Region 19 Assistant Principal of the Year by the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, or TASP. She was selected for her exemplary performance and outstanding leadership in secondary education. Congratulations to the TASP Region 19 High School Assistant Principal of the Year, Diane Duncan. Congratulations once again. Next, we will introduce an extraordinary group of educators who have devoted many years of service to Team SISD and its students, our 2018 retirees. The retiring, retiring employees will receive a personalized photo collage to commemorate their time in the district and a lifetime activity pass to enter sporting events in SISD for free. These outstanding individuals have been vital members of Team SISD and dedicated mentors for our children. During their time in SISD, they have educated thousands of students, offered guidance and support, and led the path to endless opportunities for our children. We appreciate their long time commitment and service to Team SISD and wish them well during their retirement. Our first recognition is for Lisa Artterberry, music teacher from the Fine Arts Department. Next, we have Mark Barksdale from Technology Services. Our next retiree honoree, Jose Benitez, from our Transportation Department. From Captain Clark Elementary School, or Middle School, excuse me, Elizabeth Vegas. Next is Dolores Pratado, teacher from Helen Ball Elementary. Our next honoree, a retired teacher from Keys Academy, Mr. Sam Cable. From Bill Cybert School, teacher, Ms. Dora Cooper. Next is Ms. Sandra De Santiago, teacher from John Druigan School. Assistant Principal from Sunridge Middle School, Ms. Lori Diaz. Our next honoree, retiree, teacher from Eastlake High School, Christine Hayden. Theater teacher from Enzer Middle School, Tracy Levin. Teacher from Manuel R. Puente's Middle School, retiree and honoree, Martina Morgan. Next, retiring counselor from Hambrick School, Mr. Ron Reeves. From Paso de Norte School, Linda Robbins. From Campestra Elementary, Teresa Salazar. Next, we have Mr. Armando Sanchez from Enzer Middle School. Our next recognition is for Leanne Schmidt, a teacher from Myrtle Cooper Elementary. Our next honoree, Letitia Torres, teacher from Myrtle Cooper, as well. Retiring from Socorro High School, Mr. Hector Vega. And last but definitely not least, retiring Fine Arts teacher, Ms. Josie Veal. If we're gonna have all of our retirees, please join the superintendent and board for a photo. And just a quick note, as they're gathering for that photo, that the portraits taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district Smug Mug account, where they are available for free high resolution download. And you can find that page on the bottom right hand corner of our website, sisd.net. There is a camera icon, again, where these portraits will be available for free high resolution download. They'll also be tweeted at @socorroISD. We have the two gentlemen. Also, as we're gathering for this, we want to wish Ms. Dora Cooper a happy birthday today. She made time out of her special day to join us, so happy birthday, ma'am. Keep smiling, looking straight ahead, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. That concludes our recognitions for this evening, thank you.
I'm just saying.
Okay, if y'all start going to sleep, we're gonna switch back to chairs. Okay, just, just saying.
Yeah, we'd like to congratulate everybody in the front row for the new comfortable seating that they have received. First time I actually see him, like, actually happy to be in the front row, look at him, he's actually smiling. Are we almost there?
Carmen.
Mr. Fraga. Open forum.
Okay, we're gonna continue with our agenda now. Item number five is open forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board during open forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the times on the agenda, all the items on the agenda, and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration. Thank you, and now we'll proceed to open forum. We have two speakers tonight, the first being Robert Clark.
How you doing? Excuse, how you doing, President and board members? My name is Robert Clark, I'm with the Badlands American Youth Football and Cheer Conference. We are a local conference that's located here in the El Paso and Los Cruces region. I'm coming on behalf of all our students that go to school here in the Socorro District. What we, so what we, the way our organization is structured, we're 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, all our subordinate organizations are 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations. What I'm coming for is because we're getting ready to start our season, so a lot of our organizations will be submitting facilities requests. We use school fields, we use high school fields because they're safer. You know, all of our organizations have insurance, all of our coaches have to have a training, all of our insurance, I mean, all of our kids have a no pass, no play policy. So our organization is a little bit different. We offer more, but we require more for, from our, you know, participants and whatnot. I'm coming because what's, what happens is that our kids who live here in the district, so we got schools like in Horizon, we got, we got organizations who are partnered with schools already. For instance, Pebble Hills High School, Eldorado High School, Americas High School, Eastlake High School. All of these have organizations that's already dealing with the schools administrations and the athletic department have a developer relationship. One of our issues is they're being charged a facility usage fee. And I'm just, what I'm trying to do is get our facilities requests approved without having to have to pay that facility usage fee. We, we totally get it with the custodians and security, but the facility usage fee that comes on top of that, it causes our organization to incur a higher burden. Like I said, we are nonprofit organizations and we're trying to provide a good service for the community. So one of the things is I'm trying to do is, what we're trying to do is get the cost lowered so that we don't have to put more money on the backs of the parents so that we can get more participation for the kids. One of the reasons why the, we have low participation numbers is because the fee that we have to charge, you know, for youth football and cheer is too high. And we're just trying to get the support from the school board.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is going to speak to an agenda item. So we will move on with district reports, a community education update, relentless pursuit of success, Mr. Fraga.
Thank you, President Nahara, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Anthony Fraga and I am the Director for Community Education here at Socorro ISD.
Good evening, and my name is Mary Jo Ochoa and I'm the Career Pathways Coordinator for Community Education.
We're very honored to present to you a summary of our great program here at Community Ed. Our team is committed to relentless pursuit of success. Celebrate what you accomplish, but raise the bar each time you succeed. That's a commitment that we make. So, we'd like to tell you how it went for us this past school year. For the third year in a row, Socorro ISD's Community Ed has been recognized as one of the top achieving programs in the area of high school equivalency. This past year, at the Workforce, Texas Workforce Commission's Annual Conference in Dallas, we received a second place acknowledgement in the state with a $30,000 incentive attached to that accomplishment. At the same conference, our program was recognized as the top partnership in the, in the state for workforce solutions board, together with adult education and literacy collaboration. And so we were the only program that received this acknowledgement. And it was, the acknowledgement was made for the first year, and that award, we received that award, we were called to the stage and recognized as the top collaboration in the state. We were the only ones to receive that acknowledgement. It didn't, it was a non-monetary award, but it was a very great honor to be recognized for our collaboration with our local workforce development board. We also thankfully received additional funding from the Texas Workforce Commission in the amount of $121,648 because our expenditure levels were on target for our mid-year budget and our enrollment levels were on target for our mid, mid-year expectations. The following is a breakdown of our completers for 2017, 2018 school year that we like to call our graduates. This past June graduation, we graduated 99 students with a general education diploma. By the way, that's a huge, just, our GED or completers was a huge, huge accomplishment by our entire team, so I, I, I want to emphasize that that number is, is, is an incredible feat. We had 11 students with an industry recognized certification in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. 22 students with an electrical apprenticeship certification. Nine students with a computer maintenance industry recognized certification. 20 hotel and hospitality students. 34 Microsoft Office Specialists. 12 security officers, eight ESLF professionals whose foreign credentials were transliterated. 17 students prepared to transition to El Paso Community College and UTEP, and 25 students obtained their US citizenship. Our total enrollment at the end of last year, June 30th, 2018, was a total of 1,104, which is about the size of a middle school here at Socorro ISD. And we were the top provider in our consortium of the three big districts. Our program continues to operate in Options High School, Elville de Chavez Elementary School, Clint ISD at Desert Hills Elementary School, Escondrias Early Childhood Center, Robert Rojas Elementary, Benito Martinez Elementary, Americas High School, Eldorado High School, and Socorro High School. And this past school year, community education opened a chapter of the National Adult Education Honor Society and inducted four students at our June celebration. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mary Jo Ochoa Hernandez, who will present on how we will be moving forward with our new grant award.
Good evening. We have received our Notice of Grant Award for the new grant cycle, which began on July the 1st, 2018. The Far West Adult Education Consortium is comprised of ESLADA, ISD as the grant recipient, fiscal agent, and a service provider. SISD is the lead organization and service provider, and we have EPI ISD and Presidio ISD as service providers as well. The initial contract has been awarded through 2020, and we have three one-year extensions making it a total of five possible years. So what we're gonna focus on next year is our enrollment. We've always had student enrollment targets, and although we don't have them for this next year yet from the Texas Workforce Commission, we've already started registration. Our registration is ongoing, we've decided to, we've actually changed our intake system to make it a quarterly intake, and just last month, just this month in July, two weeks ago, we have already registered 330 returning students. So that's a really good indication that we're actually doing something right if they want to come back to us. Next month in August, we have 441 students with appointment registrations already. So this will be the first year that we're going to start our school year with about, with over 700 students, and that's a, a nice accomplishment. How are we gonna improve from last year's? It was, it was a very successful year, so we've been brainstorming over the summer and all throughout the year, lessons being learned, and we want to focus on three objectives. The first one is to visit with employers to see how we can help them upscale their employees. We want to provide, meet the needs of incumbent employees. We can either do classes at their sites or do them at our sites where they can come and we can be flexible to meet their schedules. Number two, we want to provide intensive services to individuals who are ready to either go to college or work or to vocational classes. Sometimes they don't have the reading levels that they actually need to get there, so we can provide them an intensive class to make sure that they meet those, those entrance requirements. Additionally, we want to network. We want to network with workforce solutions, we want to network with the SISD departments, and we also want to network with local businesses. Why? To get our completers jobs, because that's gonna be our ultimate goal. So in conclusion, we wanted to put this little saying that we're gonna strive for because that's something that you'll see here, this was at their graduation in June, and everybody starts something, but only the brave persevere. This is, this completes our presentation, and we'll take any questions if you all have them.
Are there any questions, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, mainly I just want to...
Yeah, mainly I just want to thank Mr. Fraga and your, your team. You're showing to everybody that in leading, inspiring, and innovating, you're ahead of curve, sir. I really appreciate what you're doing to show every student to not forgotten and through our doors comes success. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. As a matter of fact, today in our discussion as a team, as we were reflecting on our core values, those three core values are the embodiment of everyone in our organization. And so we're really grateful to be a part of Socorro and those, those core values that represent who it is that we are.
Mr. Nahara.
Thank you.
Mr. A.
Mr. Fraga, I also kind of echo what Mr. Gonzalez said to you and your team. However, lots of people can do this type of work, but year after year, your group has made it better, bigger, and consequently, our community, community benefits from this quite a bit. And so congratulations to you and your team. Every year it's better, every year it's bigger, and so you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Nahara, I'm kind of jealous over here because of, well, you guys didn't bring them today, did you? At our committee meeting, they brought their awards. These things were like 20 pounds, 25 pound heavy awards.
Oh, wow.
They were, had to drag in to... We need any award that we ever got look like, you know, something.
We're going to, we're going to buy a wagon.
Those things were heavy, there was two of them, so no, congratulations to you guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, I also echo what the other trustees mentioned, and I just want to say thank you to Mr. Fraga, Mr. Ochoa, and the entire team. You know, we're SISD and just like 100% of the time, we're focusing on our amazing students, but many of these adults who are achieving these GEDs as an example are our parents. So another to empower them so that they can learn, so that they can help their little ones at home is a great step, so I thank you. As a matter of fact, I know, I see Isabel, some team members, if you could please stand up, you're at the Community Ed, if you work with them.
Please.
I see Isabel, well, if you please. Job, job well done. Thank you for continuing working with our, our adults in our SISD community. Thank you, Mr. Fraga, and thank you to the team.
That's our State Teacher of the Year, Mr. Seines.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
I think we... I just want to make sure everyone heard that. That is Mr. Seines, not SISD State, SISD Teacher of the Year, not El Paso Region, not West Texas, the entire state of Texas Teacher of the Year for Adol. Mr. Seines, please stand up for one more time. Thank you again, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza, for that acknowledgement.
Mr. Fraga, thank you so much for everything you all did.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Good night, folks.
Okay, our next district report is Facilities Report from Mr. Eington.
We're going to have to move the chairs back some. It looks like when we push the chair back, we have to watch it to keep them ready. Yeah, yeah, that'll be easy.
Took me a little, a little while to get out of that chair.
Did you get comfortable, Mr. Eington?
No. Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, Dr. Espinoza. The Facility Report in your binder will start on page 19, and it'll not really follow what I'm going to show you up on the screen because there are going to be a lot of pictures and updated fact sheets. So we'll get to the first one, and I did have to put in a roof.
You promised no roofs.
Actually, this is a...
A roof?
A roof. Yeah. But it's an old, it's an old picture. It's a couple of, couple of days old because the lower left-hand portion of it is actually paved in asphalt and curved. And, and the backside, the, the little area in the front right lower section will be, they'll actually do the loop tomorrow. So the school is coming along very well. We had, we got our TCO to move in our furniture last Friday. The first truckload came in, first truckloads came in yesterday, and I'll show you some pictures of us preparing for Monday. The actual report, the fact sheet, we are, are moving along real well. We are about 90, 95% complete in the kitchen. The framing and the library is, is going along. That's the second phase, or the third phase, actually. MEP is going on. We had units tested, final inspections done on our mechanical and plumbing and electrical, and they were turned on. And we are finalizing the roof areas and the areas that will be housing the kids. Site grading is going on, actually landscaping, and when I get to the pictures, you'll see some of the activity going on. We have a total of 2.3 millions, a little over 2.3 million in contingency savings and contingency buyout. The next page shows some expenditures, but you notice that there is one, two, three, four of those are deductive change orders where we're getting money back, and I'll point those out as we go through the pictures. This is the first truckload that arrived yesterday. They started unloading it and on the side of the building, and then you'll see pictures of it actually being dispersed throughout the building. This is a classroom as you see it now, almost ready. You've got some tables being installed in it. We're missing the student desk, but they're, they're on their way, so we are, we're working with that. You can see chairs are stacked up in, in some of the classrooms. The flooring is done, ceilings are in, lights are on. Everything's ready to go. All we've got to do is get a temporary certificate of occupancy, and we hope that the city will start that process tomorrow, and then we can have our teachers start moving in probably on Friday to start setting up. This shows kind of standing in a hub area, looking into a classroom. That glass wall is a movable wall. It'll fold out of the way and expand into the classroom, and then it'll expand into an area like this. The little islands are our data centers. They're all powered up, and, and we're ready to go. This is what we call air-conditioned socks. This is actually in the cafeteria. I don't know if you can see it in that picture, but it actually has Jose F. Crossco School on one side and the logo and the Buffalo on the other side. These are similar to what we have at Escondrius Elementary School. That's our air conditioning, and we saved, by going to that, we saved, where did we save? I can't, new glasses are not working out. $52,000, no, $20,000 on the ductwork. So, you know, so that's high up. I didn't want to show you down below because it wasn't quite ready, but it'll be ready. This is our kitchen. Kitchen has all the equipment in it. We are removing the plastic yesterday. I could have shown you a picture that I tweeted out, and it was all covered in plastic, so people are coming in there, cleaning up, and preparing the kitchen for its health inspection on Thursday. Exterior, this is actually from the second floor, looking out the end of a classroom wing. The red canopy below that has all the, the playground equipment. It's, it'll be usable for the kids. And then you can see in the background, the basketball courts, that's ready. And then you can see some of the drop-off lane, and then we'll have everything fenced according to the original plan, and then we'll have some temporary fencing up to areas that may not be quite ready, that will follow in the other phases. It'll be safe and secure. Here's a picture of the basketball courts, all the sidewalks and everything will be in. I don't, this is one of the drop-off area that's, that has been paved. In fact, that's that area from the aerial that has been paved. This one doesn't show trees going in, but there are, grant you, there are landscaping areas going in. We'll have a forest out there because of the landscape ordinance. That is Crossco Elementary School. The next project, that is the 2011 bond program from the, the savings that we generated from the 2011, we are constructing Crossco Elementary. The next, next project will be a series of 2017 bond project. The first one is Socorro High School. This project is really progressing. We have another meeting with the architects on Thursday to kind of do some review of the scope with various departments, and we will be finalizing after that meeting and to be able to present schematic drawings and schematic design presentation to the board, to the facility, and to the community if needed. Elementary number 30. This is the elementary school that is the prototypical design of one that you just saw at Crossco. Y'all, the board awarded the construction project last month on the 23rd or 4th or somewhere in, in that area, and we have, the contractors have fenced it off, mobilized, set up their construction facilities and starting to mobilize. Earthwork should start in August. We should have final building permits by the end of this, this week. So this project will be going full bore within the next couple of weeks. And then this is kind of the floor plan. This is Mike, Mike Price is on the far side, the left-hand side. Ralph, and I won't say it because I'll mispronounce it, but Mr. Patton's not here. Ralph Setzinger.
Setzinger.
Setzinger is the bottom. So this is elementary number 30. Montwood High School, El Dorado High School, and Americas High School are, are coming up fast. We, we've been meeting with the architects on each of those projects. We've had preliminary meetings. We have had some preliminary scope meetings. They are on Montwood. They are actually doing a study with the construction manager at risk to determine cost on some preliminary scenarios, and so that project is moving. We have enlisted a survey to go out and to survey the existing area in Topo. Same thing.
Yes, Eington, a real quick question. The only reason I'm asking is that I've had a couple of people ask me about it. At Mawood and Socorro, is there dance classrooms? Are we doing anything with, with that area? Are we making, are we expanding them, or are we? Because I, right now, I kind of get that. I know, I've seen Socorro's, it's small, it's like a classroom compared to everybody else's, and I think Mawood as well. And I've had...
I know that that's a part of the Fine Arts Program, and we are looking into that. Let me check on Socorro. I know that a lot of that is being rebuilt in the new, new part of the construction.
I'm just asking because like I said, I've had a number of parents call me up because you, I'd say anything, like, you go to Eastlake, you go to the new high schools, they're 30, 40 times bigger compared to Socorro's and Mawood's?
Well, this, it, you know, everything was equity. Everything is based on Pebble Hills or Eastlake, so, so that's what we're...
I'm just asking, it was just...
Yeah.
If I get parents calling me again, I said I asked, and I'll have an answer for you, so...
Yes, we are, we're doing some equity on, on those.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Americas is the same thing. We, we've select, enlisted a survey to go out and survey the existing area in, in Topo, some areas that could possibly be, once we determine where the additions could be at Americas, so we have to identify those areas. El Dorado, same thing. We met, I met with the surveyors this morning, released them, or in the process of releasing them to do a existing survey, and, and we've met with the architect on that to come up with some, just preliminary, they've done some preliminary sketches, but nothing definite now. The new student activity complex, we closed on 40 acres last week. We had closed on five acres a couple of weeks prior to that. So that's 45 acres that the city, that we have purchased out of the 60 acres that we're looking at. So the, the remaining acreage is 15 acres that we are working with to, to purchase that, and then at that time, we'll be able to start that project. Multipurpose room, the 16 various campuses that will receive multipurpose rooms. We had a meeting last Thursday where we met with the 16 principals, actually 15 of them because Myrtle Cooper does not have a principal yet, so we met with 15 out of the 16 principals, showed them three different concepts, three different schemes, and they came up with scheme number one, which is, this is kind of the basic floor plan, it needs to be developed out. The, the only addition that they came out with, there are about seven, seven schools that informed me, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven schools that do not have a stage in their cafeteria. These are older schools, and they would love to see if there would be some way or another that we incorporate a stage in this facility. Now, the guys, the guys, or the principals that had stages prefer the storage room. So we're looking at that, but this one shows that we took the storage room out and converted it into a small stage, kind of in the center of the building with a ramp up the backside of it to make it ADA acceptable, accessible. So we're looking at that. I think we can do that and accomplish it in, in the schools that will need it, and maybe that's where we start looking at how we divide these into smaller packages. You know, the ones that don't need stages, we give it to a certain contractor, the ones that do need stages, we divide them up. So that's a possibility that we're looking at. These are some of the, are some of the elevations and the general perspective of what they're going to look like. Let me go back. You see the three big openings on the top of the screens? Those are actually overhead doors that coil up and roll up. So El Paso has pretty decent weather. They can actually expand out from that multipurpose room if they wanted to into a canopy area in the back, and, and you... in the back and, and utilize the exterior, or just completely close them in. That was one of the things that, we only had two in the first concept, and the other two had three, so they wanted three doors if we were going to give them any doors. So we came back and added that. So you can see that the front is a canopy. It looks like that we will be building a freestanding facility and connecting it to the building because of code. If we attach a new building to existing building, we got to upgrade the old building, or the existing building. So there's, we're still researching that, but it looks like it's going to be some type of freestanding facility and possibly with the onus in the back. The next one is the support services facility, or the technology facility, which is the addition to this building. We met with the architects and Mr. Raina and his staff a week or so ago and reviewed some concept. Are y'all ready? We had two concepts. The one on the far left is, it says alternate one, and the one on the far, far right is two. It's a addition into the parking lot, the temporary parking lot, with some type of, kind of a courtyard connection between the two.
We can't do an inflatable building?
Yeah. Yes.
Is it a little metal?
Also remind Mr. Raina, he can't have a bigger office than the suit.
I'm watching that. I am watching that. But they voted on the far, my left-hand side, number one, as the, the one that we would further develop. It will have a connection between the second floor, and then of course, it'll have a connection on, on the first floor. Those to be worked out a little bit more once we get into the design. But this is just concept like we started with Socorro High School, and now these will be refined and developed more.
I still think portables would do it.
And I think the last project is the new middle school on, at Eastlake. We are in the process of narrowing in on some more real estate in order to come and discuss with you at a later time. So we, we, we've been focusing on some additional sites that we could come and present back to the board for their information. I do have a real quick update in executive session on real estate. It won't take two minutes to, to inform you. And I believe that's it. I will answer any questions about the facility.
Are there any questions? Mr. Ay...
I know you've mentioned it several times, Mr. Ayington, but just to reiterate, so, Jose Carrasco, we will be ready to go on Monday. Students can go, things are working, we've got computers, AV, we've got things working there yet?
We will be...
Or we'll have by Monday?
We will have, it'll be ready to go. I'm not too sure about the computers, you know? That's one of the last thing that comes in. But we will have the classrooms, and the cafeteria, and the kitchen open. However, we have a contingency, and probably the first two or three days, we will serve cold meals because it's all contingent on the city and getting a temporary CO, and then we have to call for a health inspection. And if we don't pass one of those, you know, the kitchen is, is the unknown at this time. But right now, we are scheduled to do a walk-through with the city tomorrow. We passed final mechanical, electrical, plumbing. Fire alarm is the key, and I will not stand here and let that school open unless we have security in place. And the city wouldn't do it either.
Right.
You know, so, is it going to be a hundred percent? No. Is there going to be a door not painted? Yes. Is there going to be a missing piece of trim? More than likely, yeah. But is it going to be conducive to educating the kids? I think these people here, all the teachers and everything, we could teach them in a tent and do a better job than anybody in this area could. But we will, we will be ready. It will be tight. It always is. I've been doing this for a long time. This is fifteen years here.
Well, at least you're not moving furniture in on Saturday and Sunday.
We've done that before.
I know.
We've had one principal stand on one of the school a number of years ago, she's no longer with us, but she got in an argument with the fire marshal. And I'm sitting there, "Don't do that." Fire marshal, you know, carries a gun. And can arrest people. And we got that, we got that CO at four-thirty Sunday afternoon, Monday, Monday morning, school was open. You know, it's not going to be that close. But we've moved John Druigan, that's another one. We got a CO at four-thirty Friday afternoon. By Monday morning, we had it all moved in, a pre-KA. So our, our, and I just text the general contractor, because there's some rumors out there saying that we're not going to be ready. And he reassured me, and, and I've been out there two days, be out there three, all this rest of the week. They've been working seven days a week, long hours. It has changed from yesterday to today. I could have shown you some pictures that I took on Monday of the classrooms, and then showed you these classrooms. It's, it's continually improving. Is it going to be a hundred percent spick and span? It's going to be close? There's going to be some things.
What about the access roads? I haven't been out there in a long time, pretty much since we went out there and broke ground. Are the access roads going to, are they paved yet, or are we still in dirt?
No, the, the roads around the school, the city required that we had two means of egress and ingress. So there is some of those roads complete. The one that comes in, the main road, that comes in the kind of the backside of the building.
Right.
Tim Floyd, that is only half paved. It's a boulevard, so it's only half paved. And then there are some, the road in front of it is paved, and then there are a couple of other ones.
I see.
You know, so, but that's, that's not on us, that's on the developer.
Yeah, I was just wondering about access, yeah.
But, but the city is going to require that, you know, we have that up and running. We have fire safety there. The key tomorrow is going to be the fire alarm system, you know? And I, I have no doubt that we will, we'll pass it. You know, and, you know, if we had one more week, it would have been a different story. But unfortunately, it's, it, it comes down to the very end on construction. It's the nature of the beast. You know, it's not rocket, rocket science, you know? They are, they are really working hard and diligently. We've got a planned cabinet on how we're going to handle the first day. We've actually, can I go back to my roof? Where is it? I think I can show it. Nope, I'm going the wrong way. Am I?
Yes, that's the roof.
Okay. Down here, down here on the lower corner where you see some of those cars parked at a...
Next to the rabbit?
Yeah, down at the lower, my left-hand corner. That is actually a detention pond to be. But we've gone in there, and we have graded that from the street all the way to the fence, and we will put in two-hundred-and-five temporary parking spaces. We'll stripe them, caulk them, chalk them, I mean. And then out of the picture, a little bit more, there will be sixty additional, additional parking spaces. So, you know, we know that the first day or two or three, you know, they're going to want to park, take little Tommy into the school.
Yeah.
And, you know...
Do we expect a full house? Anybody know?
Yes.
You know, so, but we, as the cabinet, you know, we're, we're actually going to meet over there Friday to kind of walk through, and, and we've got anywhere from fifty to, to sixty people that are going to be there the first day of school to kind of help.
Okay.
And police services are going to be there to help with traffic and everything else, so, just like they're going to be there tomorrow to help with traffic.
If he's not ready, just taze him.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's really coming along, you know? We, tomorrow's a key day. Tomorrow's a key day.
Mr. Ayington, I just have a suggestion.
If you please do me a big favor, you put a big sign up in front, if you have any problems or questions, direct them to call their representative, Mrs. Nakira.
Our sister's entire board represents the entire district, they can call you as well.
Oh, yeah, we only do represent the whole district.
I think you need to direct them across the street to Idea for complaints and concerns.
We will have temporary signage, entrances, exits, parking here, no parking, handicap parking. We'll have, the contractors even donated, he's actually making the signs that we suggested, and he's actually coming up with some banners and stuff that we're going to actually put on the fence.
To direct people?
To kind of screen some unfinished areas and stuff.
Oh, okay.
You know, so, there's going to be work going on, but the first week of school, we're not working, you know, that much. If they're working on the outside of the building, away from the building, that's fine, but inside the building, there's not going to be working on the building. And then we'll, we'll go to some type of night schedule at that time.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Ayington, this may be a question for one of the other cabinet members, but how many students are we opening the campus with? How many students? And I, I kind of figured it would be Ms. Macias that would be able to have that information. But what's our, what's our enrollment for the first day of school, give or take?
We're consistently enrolling right now seven-hundred-and-thirty-two, and we do have pre-K AM, pre-K PM, pre-K full day, kinder through fifth grade. So all students, or all students and teachers are in place, and we have a plan. We're going to go over the DSC support. They're going to come over to Pebble Hills on Friday, and we're going to go through all our, our protocols and dues, and we actually are going to have a shuttle service for that day. Dr. Espinoza's service is our number-one priority, so we're going to have a shuttle service just in case they do park a little bit further, we're able to get them to the door expediently as possible.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions?
If I may, President...
Yes, start.
Yes, as Ms. Ayington has articulated, go back to that picture, Ms. Ayington. When you see that, it's, it's, it's pretty scary, especially when you're anticipating over seven-hundred students on the first day of school. And as Ms. Macias said, a lot of those students are pre-kers. These parents are going to park and not just drop off their ch... These parents are not, are not going to just pull up and let their four-year-old walk in, they're going to park and get off. So we had a, a meeting last week, I think it was, last week. I asked all the team, hey, meet me out there, or the police department was there, assistant superintendents, and we developed a, a plan that I feel comfortable with as far as the drop-off on that morning. There's going to be vans, there's going to be a lot of traffic, there's some roads that are not even, you know, paved yet, but it is coming along. But I feel comfortable and confident that that first day, our parents are going to feel, you know, comfortable dropping their little ones off and, and let them have an exciting, exciting day. There'll still be work be done throughout the semester, you know, but, you know, we're excited. Those teachers, that faculty and staff have worked hard on the leadership, as I said earlier, under Mr. Sepulveda, and, and they'll be ready to receive students on that first day on Monday, so, great job, team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayington.
Thank you.
Our next district report is the safety and security update. Mr. Castro, Chief Castorina, and Tammy McCabon.
President, I head out, board members, superintendent, Dr. Espinoza. I'm Mr. Mike Castro, I'm the emergency manager for the school district, and I'll let my colleagues here introduce themselves.
She said, shall we sit? And I said, well, yeah, sure, why not? Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, Joe Castorina, Chief of Police.
Good evening, President Nahad, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board, Tammy McCabon, Director of Guidance and Counseling.
And I would also like to recognize our Safety and Security Committee team. They're here for, for support and all the hard work they've done. If you could please stand up. That's our Safety and Security Committee team members.
Awesome. Thank you all so much.
So there's, there's some that are missing, though, they're, they're, we have a bigger group of us that are working together. Basically, what we're going to do tonight is talk to you about keep SISD safe. One of the things that we've, that's happened is, as you well know, Texas Governor Abbott has issued a school and firearm safety action plan. So basically, what we're going to do is align our school and safety action plan to what the governor has asked. So the first part here is on our webpage. Whenever you turn onto our webpage there, on the top right-hand corner, you'll have keep SISD safe. That, right there, is a red button. Any community member can click on that button, it gives them resources to our police department, emergency management, all the tools and resources there. So we basically bundled our information there for our community members to go in there and take a look at what we do in our school as far as safety and security. Hey, there's basically, the first part we're going to talk to you about is going to be law enforcement. There's going to be basically four, three parts that we're going to look at, and it basically aligns to Governor Abbott's safety action plan. That's law enforcement, emergency management, and mental health. First part, law enforcement.
So, these are recommendations that, that were put down by the state and the governor, and, and I, I think he means well with the idea of putting responsibility on us. But, you know, we've already been doing a lot over the last couple of years. This is really just kind of testing ourselves and solidifying what we've already been doing in the past. One thing we are going to start doing is getting back into classrooms more this year than we did last year. Our target groups are the fourth and fifth graders. We're going to have, I have one police officer signed with a K-9 officer, that are going to go through the elementaries and, and start looking for opportunities to teach on what consequences are and, and prepare them for the middle school environment and whatnot, and so on and so forth with the middle schools and the high schools. And so we're also going to try to get more officers retrained in GRAIT. We've already met with Mr. Starkey, and there's opportunities for funding through, through his area, and he's already on board. He said that, yes, no problem, it, it falls in line with what the requirements are under the title programs. And so the goal is to try to get ten more certified. Now, GRAIT is, for those of you who may or may not know, gang resistance education and training. It, it's, it's all des... Oh, I'm sorry. It's all, God, I lost that word. What is that? Well, anyway. What we're going to do with that is, is the hope is to try to teach our kids on what the dangers are of getting involved, you know, with things like the gangs, the drugs, and, and hopefully, we're building a, a better model for them and, and trying to get them to be better prepared for when they go out into the real world, as we call it. And so, the safety action plan is just, basically, we're going to have more presence out there. We're going to get more involved. We started a campaign last year, we did the movies at the SAC, y'all, if y'all had an opportunity to come through. We had good participation, not as much as we hoped for, but then the heat was a factor. And so we're going to continue with those types of events and, and bringing more people into our station. We're meeting more with other agencies. As a matter of fact, I have an invitation out to them to come in when school opens, and, and a lot of them have said, have said that they're going to increase patrols in and around our schools to ensure that our first week goes off without a hitch. Carrasco, of course, is, is our focus, starting next Monday, and I will have six people along with myself there. But we're not leaving the rest of the schools unattended, so we're reaching out to them for support. And so far, I mean, the response has been phenomenal. I, I believe you're going to see more law enforcement present out next week when kids are coming back.
And the next phase of our safety action plan, this goes right in line with Governor Abbott's safety action plan. So we've already started doing this. We started implementing our standard response protocol. We've already trained our police officers, our security. We're going to train our nurses next, our telenutrition service managers. This week, since we had professional development week, our teachers already trained on standard response protocol. So what is standard response protocol? So, what is standard response protocol? Basically, that is through the Texas School Safety Center and the I Love You Guys Foundation. And basically, what it does, it allows us to follow five protective actions. We're already doing this in our schools, all we're doing is enhancing our protective actions, which include lockout, lockdown, evacuation, shelter, and hold. So, the new one that everybody's gonna need to get used to is that hold piece of it, and basically, that's hold in the classroom. Say, for example, there's a medical event going on within the hallways, maybe transition's coming up, and when you get first responders into the area, we can say, hold in the classroom, hold in the classroom area, everyone will stay put. So, that's a piece of it we're gonna enhance our protective actions with, and that is the standard response protocol. We will be adding additional training with our standard response protocol. We did have the opportunity to become certified trainers, Chief Castorina, myself, and Sergeant Delgado, we went out, got trained, now we're rolling the training over to the schools. One of the things, the, one of the best pieces about the training is that it's about forty-five minutes long, and it has videos embedded, and it goes along with those five protective actions. So, our teachers, our custodians, our child nutrition services, anybody that walks into our schools, their employees within our schools, will get trained on the standard response protocol. As a matter of fact, we did a trade today with our new employees, they came in, and they really are very receptive to it because it's straightforward trading. On their previous slide, which you would, which you would've seen there also, is it gives you processes for students and teachers for the standard response protocol. And again, we're gonna conduct our lockouts, lockdowns, evacuations, shelter, and hold. Each of those drills are gonna be done one time per semester, for the exception of our lockdowns. Our lockdowns are gonna be done once every nine weeks. So, we're gonna enhance our training abilities with the lockdowns. And then lastly, just so y'all know, for the last school year, we conducted nine hundred and seventy-five emergency drills throughout our schools. A lot of drills, that includes our fire drills, our shelters, our evacuations, our lockdowns, all that's we did, we conducted nine hundred and seventy-five drills. Our next, the next piece here, on the bottom there on the slide, it talks about Safety and Security Committee. One of the things that, within Governor Abbott's safety action plan, is he's calling for all the schools with their Safety and Security Committee to meet at least three times a year. So, our meetings are gonna be three times a year, they're gonna be during intercessions in October, March, and in June, and then we'll report out, give updates to the school board to y'all, twice a year, twice a year. So, this will be a yearly thing, where we do it in July, and also in one in January. And then we're gonna need a member from the school board to be part of our team as far as the Safety and Security Committee. Okay, next piece, mental health.
So, the next component is mental health awareness. And one of the things that we're doing through mental health awareness, both of the gentlemen were talking about the keep SISD safe link. On that link, or on that site, there is a link to the Department of Guidance and Counseling website where we have our suicide prevention information. So, it's under the, under bullying prevention, so parents can go directly there and find information, so that we're helping to keep them aware of what's going on in our society's resources and availability for them when it comes to suicide prevention and suicide awareness. Another thing we're doing is mental health awareness training for all of our employees. One of the things that we started last year is we're training all new employees, substitutes, everyone in mental health awareness, and on the next slide, I'll show you the training that we are doing for them. We also are fortunate to be, to have a partnership with Project Vida. This last year, we had an LPC, or Licensed Professional Counselor, in the Mottwood feeder pattern. Mottwood High School had an LPC, and then we added one at Desert Win. So, therefore, when we're referring out, of course, we give referral resources to all the parents, everything in the community, but there's something right there on campus. So, though, when there's barriers, transportation, finances, whatever the case may be, we do have LPCs. This year, we're adding an LPC at Mottwood High School feeder pattern, Socorro High School feeder pattern, and Pebble Hills High School feeder pattern to help with services. The next thing as well, on our safety protocols, we do have protocols to be on the campuses and help when there is grief or loss, when there's been suicides. But one thing, we talked about this last year, is we need to be there to support our students and our faculty in any kind of traumatic situation on the campus, whether it be a gas leak, whether it be a bomb threat, because what we know is our students and our faculty can be traumatized by that, so we wanna be there to support. So, that's a new protocol that we're putting in place as well, to help our employees and our students in any kind of a situation. And next, this is the training that I was talking about, the suicide awareness, it gives you the website right there. We trained all of our faculty and staff last year, this year, we're training all new employees, and we're giving our faculty and staff a refresher course, it's just a little bit shorter. Excuse me, and we also are training our faculty and staff, our counselors are. It's Senate Bill 460, which is mental health awareness, to train our faculty and staff on things like signs of depression, anxiety, ADHD, so that they can better work with the students in the classroom. And then, one of the last things we're doing is we're providing mental health first aid to our faculty and staff. I know our police officers have already been trained, this is a big initiative of Governor Abbott's plan, so we'll be training more faculty and staff on that as well. And then, through Region 19, Education Service Center, the Threat Assessment Workshops. And then, another great partnership we have is with NAMI, and we have a NAMI here this evening that provides workshops for parents, to help parents that might have loved ones that suffer from mental illness, they also work with the schools as well. So, we do have a lot of initiatives that we're working on to help bring awareness and training on mental health issues.
So, that is our safety action plan, the law enforcement piece of it, the emergency management, mental health. Any questions?
Any questions? Sounds like an amazing plan, and we look forward to seeing the changes, but thank you all so much for your collaboration in making sure our students are safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
Seven G. Seven what? G, is that the one you were gonna pull? Yeah, okay. Never mind. No, if administration does it, it's your problem. Yeah, yeah, seven G, the item will be presented in a future meeting.
Okay. Any others? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Au, then a second by Ms. Rodriguez to approve consent agenda with the exception of item seven G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item eight, new business, A, consider approval of 2018, 2019 student code of conduct. Ms. Macias?
Yes. President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Administration recommends the approval of our student code of conduct 2018, 2019. There have been no state modifications recommended for this year. This year, they were minor adjustments that we made, and truly, what we did is we made it more user-friendly for our parents. What we did is we added the PMS codes to our student code of conduct, that way it was transparent, that way they saw exactly what we were actually holding our students accountable for and how we were helping them as far as for their discipline. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Au, a second by Ms. Rodriguez, is there any further discussion?
President Nahara?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Macias, you shared the student code of conduct with us in one of our committee meetings, and I have to tell you, having those PMS codes there, I think it is very transparent, I think it's gonna help the campuses, and it's gonna help everybody in general. I was even, you know, again, looking at it, we're always very quick to code something a certain way, but I think with, thank goodness, there weren't a whole lot of changes this year, but I appreciate the work that you and your team did in adding that information into the student code of conduct, I appreciate that.
Thank you, and you know that Ms. Lupe Lujan is amazing, and we have a great campus behavior coordinator team of administrators that help us on a mentally basis, and that was their vision, so I will make sure to convey that to them this month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And Ms. Macias, we get to hear from you again as we consider approval of local policy.
Me again. Administration recommends, they recommend, or the approval of policy DCE and DEA as presented.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta, and a second by Ms. Rodriguez, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias. Item C, discussion and possible action to approve employee onsite health clinic. Mr. Campoya and Mr. Camona.
Good evening, board, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My name is Maider Carmona, Director of Employee Benefits and Risk Management. Today, I'm here to present information related to the possible implementation of a health clinic for employees and dependent, and dependents covered under the district health plan.
Oh, Mr. Camona.
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll, pardon, just a moment, I messed up. Yes? Okay, I'm sorry, we do have a speaker on this item, and we need to hear from her first before we present, I do apologize. Our speaker on this item is Angelica Soto.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, and Dr. Espinoza. I speak today to advocate for the creation of a clinic for employees and their families. I believe having a clinic would be an asset to the district in terms of helping employees and their families with healthcare costs, and most importantly, with preventive care to keep employees healthy. To illustrate what an impact this clinic would have on the health of SISD employees, I'm going to tell you a true story about a colleague who developed non-alcoholic fatty liver disease. For many years, I would encourage my colleague to visit a primary care physician. She has high blood pressure and asthma, so I believe she needed better care than what she was getting with what I call a dock-in-a-box, those clinics that you drop in, which is where she was going for the antibiotics and blood pressure meds. It was much more convenient for her to walk into the clinic after school to get her meds than to make an appointment and probably have to take time off from work. Also, she would put off seeing a doctor until she was extremely ill because of copays and deductibles. Now, not only does she have cirrhosis of the liver and all the health problems that accompany that disease, but the cost of treating her disease have increased exponentially, both for her and the insurance. If SISD had a clinic, I know that this disease might have been prevented or treated in a timely manner because of the better treatment, low cost, and convenience the clinic would have afforded my colleague. I would also add that if SISD has a clinic, incentivizing regular checkups would also prevent illnesses and help keep healthcare costs down. Employees are very excited when I mention the possibility of a clinic. They are very hopeful that they will, this will soon become a reality. On behalf of the members of Socorro Education Association, as well as myself, I urge you to move forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. And Mr. Camona, I'm sorry, now you can continue.
The following presentation summarizes data reviewed during our prior committee and workshop meetings. The first piece of information that I'm gonna be reviewing is related to a survey that we conducted for ten days. The survey ran from May 15th through May 25th. The intent of the survey was to be able to gauge possible level of employee participation. The survey included six questions, a section for comments and suggestions, the survey results, or level of participation, total twelve hundred employees' responses, and overall positive response to the clinic. The six questions include, and I'm just gonna go over the highlights unless you have any questions. When is the best time for you to visit the employee clinic? Seventy-six percent indicate late afternoon. How likely are you to participate in a wellness health promotion program at work? Fifty-one percent, very likely, forty-four percent, somewhat likely. What type of clinic appointment options do you prefer? Eighty-five percent, a combination of both walk-in and appointment. How frequently would you use a employee clinic? Sixty-one percent, two to five times per year, twenty-six percent, five times plus times a year. Which days would you be most conveni- I'm sorry, which days would be the most convenient to visit the employee clinic? Eighty percent, Tuesday through Saturday. And the survey was not to set a schedule, a time, dates, it was just to, again, get an idea of what our employees, the interest that we have in this particular clinic. The last question was related to the type of topics or education they would like to receive through this service, and out of twelve main topics, the top five are related to nutrition, stress management, physical activity, women's, men's health, safety, CPR, first aid training, financial wellness, and so on and so forth. The sections for comments or suggestions, those top fives are a great idea, concerns about the location, would like family and dependents included, would like the clinic to accept other forms of insurance other than Cigna, and concerns about office wait time, but I think it's, office wait time is a concern throughout our area. Some of the information that we have reviewed throughout our meetings is related to the benefits and advantages of having a health clinic. Those highlights are early detection and management of chronic conditions, preventive treatment of illness, fewer urgent care and/or emergency room visits, reduction of absenteeism, reinforcement of wellness culture, improve the ability to recruit new employees, lower health plan costs, as employees access preventive care, reduce costs for chronic conditions or severe medical events in future years due to early intervention. The type of services that we're anticipating to be able to provide through the site are minor and acute care. Those are related to preventive care, short-term care for chronic conditions, vaccinations and injections, minor illnesses or injuries, and urgent care. Staffing configuration, we are hoping that within the, up to the first eighteen months of operation, we'll be able to have a pharmacist, pharmacy tech, an MD, two nurse practitioners or physician assistants, three certified medical assistants, and one office manager, which also be a nurse, a registered nurse. And again, we're anticipating to have the staffing configuration up to this number of staff members, depending on the volume that we see through our location. One of the questions or concerns that was mentioned during our presentations was related to utilization statistics, and we looked at a period of data from our Cigna, or our third-party administrator, in this case, Cigna, and the data that we looked at, the period was September 1st through August 31st, 2017, and what we did is, we looked at a total number of visits for primary care physicians, specialists, urgent care, and ER visits versus total number of dollars, and the average cost was calculated per visit. As you can see in this particular table, what's costing, I guess, out of those four types of, or categories of services, it's emergency visits. Emergency visits, we had a total of two hundred and forty-seven, total annual dollars is two hundred and forty-one thousand, yet the average cost per visit is nine hundred and seventy-nine, significantly higher than any other type of visit. So, what can we do if, in fact, the employee clinic was to be implemented? What could we, how could we help our health fund save? We could look at, again, within that twelve-month period, we can have a conservative approach, and we will look at the first percentage within the steerage section of the table, and/or we could look up to the end of that twelve-month period in looking at a more optimistic number of participation. What we're hoping to accomplish is to have a total visits to the clinic, again, if it's conservative, they're around three thousand four hundred, if it's optimistic, that will be seven thousand two hundred. The estimated savings between the two, it's either five hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred, up to one point one million dollars. The average total of visits would be eight point nine percent, or thirteen point three visits per day, up to eighteen point six percent, or twenty-seven visits per day. Another item that was discussed in detail was the pharmacy, implementing a pharmacy within the site of the clinic, and we discussed the initial estimated cost. And we discussed the initial estimated cost. At this point, we're anticipating that it will be between 200,000 up to 250,000. That cost will include shelving, software, prescription, initial setup, bottles, caps, storage, security, and other. Within other, we have discussed that the location itself does not have a setup for a pharmacy. And there's some requirements that need to be met for us to be able to provide pharmacy services. One of them is being able to, or we need to have hot and cold water within that site or that side of the building. We're estimating dispensing generic drugs of up to 50% of those visits. In total, we're anticipating an initial district cost of approximate startup fee That will include licensing, furniture for the exam rooms, the main waiting areas, medical supplies, and the pharmacy. Approximate annual physical fixed cost, 760,328, and that's mainly for the clinic staff. Total approximate cost first year is 1,098,478. So, some other recommendations that we have looked at, and I apologize, I forgot to introduce Ms. Rebecca McLaughlin. She's been assisting us with the recommendations and the research of the data. So along with our insurance consultant, the recommendations are the following. Release RFQ for the following: Staffing for Doctor of Medicine and Pharmacies, pharmacists for clinic and pharmacy coverage, prescription software, prescription supplier, immunizations, vaccinations, review results from RFQ, select a finalist list for RFP, interview survivors if applicable, present recommendation to the board, and implement the first quarter of 2019. Then again, you'll notice that most or none of the recommendations have a timeline yet because it's contingent or based on approval. I don't know if, at this point, are there any questions?
Well, so, we can still discuss it. So, motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub and a second by Mr. Gonda. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Nahara.
And, and just to be clear, I know the agenda item said for possibility of, so what's up? The motion is to approve the health clinic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ayub.
Mr. Carmona, I still, I still have questions. You know, I unfortunately could not be at the presentation, but when I look at the numbers, and, and I tried calling, of course, you know, last minute, you know, everybody's certainly busy, so I, I apologize also that, that I couldn't get ahold of you any certain, any sooner, so I'm gonna, sorry, put you on the spot. The, the startup cost of 380,000, that, that includes the 200 to 250 for just the pharmacy itself?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, as far as, what about, just looking at those two numbers, you know, the estimated savings is 1.8 or, or on the high end, and the cost is, is about 1.1. But what about utilities and, you know, and, and are the liability costs already incorporated in there? Because we don't just have the one physician practitioner. You know, do, do we know, is each staff member going to have to be liability, or is it just liability for the whole clinic? And are those in the, because, because by that time, the numbers start, don't start to make up sense. If it costs 250 for the pharmacy, and then, you know, what was it, like, 7,000? I don't know what exactly all this start, how that liability, whether it's per month, and, and I know the numbers went up, you know, after it says something in there about five years. So, the 388 doesn't start to make, it's, it sounds low, like if we're missing some numbers. And, like I said, the utilities, I know, are those factored in there as well? Because it's my understanding that the building is, is vacant right now. So, you know, those are, are not going to, those are additional incurred costs because we're not incurring them right now. So, all of that was factored?
No, sir, not yet. So, in terms of the liability, the building itself will be just a matter of adding that to the current list of items that we have under liability. Licensing or malpractice insurance, that was factored in.
To the 388?
Yeah.
Or 338, I'm sorry.
Right. That was factored in. And licensing to be able to open the actual clinic, the pharmacy, and so on.
And the 760, that includes our, our...
Health insurance?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. What about malpractice claims? I mean, what is, what is our, is, is, how is that going to affect our general liability insurance as a whole, you know? And what is our deductible going to be there? I mean, because really, when it comes to medical practice, it's not if, it's just when. And so, you know, did we factor that as well?
We did factor a cost for malpractice insurance, but malpractice insurance does vary based on the physician's history. So, there is a variable. It can be from 2,000 to 8,000 or plus. It depends on their claims history. So, upon hiring, those are the things you would have to look at when hiring an MD.
And, and how about recruitment costs? You know, I meant, even that, you know, there's some additional expense. So, again, I think, I, I think this is a good idea, but I don't think we have a clear picture of the cost. You know, some of the fundamental questions and the way I see them asked, you know, it says, okay, so out of 6,000 employees, 1,200 actually responded. You know, to me, that's, that's less than 20%, you know? And are those the same employees that are actually using the services? Because it does us absolutely no good if 1,200 employees are saying, "Yeah, we're going to use it," and the other, you know, 4,800 aren't using it. So this isn't savings, this is actually additional cost. Because, you know, now, we're opening an avenue for the people who usually wouldn't use it, you know, now go use it. And that, not, not that that's not a good thing, yeah, it's a good thing, but, you know, it comes with an additional cost. Or our objective of trying to make a positive impact to, you know, the cost structure is not there. When you look at, you know, the ER visits, yeah, the ER visits are the most substantial. But when you look at the hours, you know, evenings, Tuesday through Saturday, did we look at when those ER visits are? I'm willing to bet that they're like at 2:00 in the morning, because I can tell you, you know, I've never been in, if, if I can avoid the emergency room at all cost, I will not go to the emergency room. You know, but sometimes at 3:00 in the morning, you don't have a choice. You know, so, those are the things that, they're factored in here and it worries me because to me, that's, that's not real.
And if I may, Mr. Nahara, just to further clarify on the emergency room visits, the number that you have on the presentation, that number is visits that can be steered away from the emergency room. It's not a true picture of the number of ER visits that we have encountered through our health plan. So, I guess, when it comes to cost and savings, if you were to look at that specific number, we looked at the type of visit, services rendered during the visit, and so on. So, technically speaking, those visits could possibly be steered away from that type of service and potentially be seen at the urgent care or perhaps a specialist.
Mr. Carmona, that's not what this says. This says utilization statistics, and it has total annual visits. So that number, I'm assuming, is the total number of visits. And I know, I know the next page says steerage, 2%.
Right, yes, that's correct.
But, again, is 2% the number of visits that we have to the emergency room between eight and five? So it's not really going to be 2%. You know, like, like I said, if our emergency room visits...
These, this emergency room visits, sir, I'm sorry. 247 are steerageable, non-emergent visits, not true emergency visits.
So...
It just doesn't indicate steerageable here, but these numbers are based off of steerageable ER visits. There were non-emergent, maybe you went to the emergency room for an ER.
So let me understand this correctly. What you're saying is that the clinic is going to get a total of 38,992 visits a year?
It's possible to get that many visits, but I don't see your first year getting that many visits. That's how many visits you had in general.
Then, then I don't understand this entire presentation, and I'll just be quiet because what it's saying here is total visits to clinic on the very next page says 3,453 to 7,236. I don't understand how on one page, it's being explained to me, and, and there's even a date here, period, 9/1/16 to 8/31/17. So, my comprehension of that presentation is that this is actual data, using Cigna data for that period, and this is total annual visits. That's the way I understand that. And based on that information, the next page indicates what percentage is estimated to actually go to the clinic. You're telling me that though, that's not the case, that the steerage somehow correlates to this number right here, and we're still going to have 40,000 visits in, in the clinic? That, that, that doesn't make sense. It doesn't even, I don't think a single practitioner could have 40,000 visits in a single year. That doesn't sound, I mean, even in a large practice.
Right. That's 10% of those physician visits, 10% of those specialist visits. So no, I mean, you're not going to see 38,000 visits and everyone that is currently covered on your Cigna plan going to the clinic.
Right, so then...
And that's not the intent of the clinic. It's the intent of the clinic was to provide just care for, healthcare for your employees.
Yeah, so, and I, like I said, I understand that. I'm just saying that, you know, I unfortunately missed the session. The information that is before me is confusing. So I don't understand it, and, and the questions I'm asking, maybe, maybe they're not helping, but, you know, the answers are only confusing me more. To me, that's just an indication that, that, you know, I mean, and, and these folks were here. I wasn't, but I don't, you know, I, I think there's some costs that are, you know, I just want to be sure that we know what we're getting into, you know? I don't, I don't want to make a decision on the understanding that this clinic is going to break even based on this information in the first year, you know, we end up losing a million dollars. I also would love to ask Gallagher, you know, hey, this isn't the first one that we've done. So I'd like to see what your projections were for some previous analysis that you'd done and what the actual outcomes were. And how long did it take to recruit a physician? And what was the recruitment cost? And, you know, I mean, so it's even simple. What did you estimate? And what was the total value? You know, and, and like I said, you know, the people who answered, "I would use the clinic," are those the same people who are, who, who are actually using the services right now? You know, I mean, it just, it, it, I don't remember what our employee turnover rate is, but what if, you know, half of those 1,200 are our new employees, you know, and, and they answered the service, the question because they think it's a great idea, because it is. It's convenient, you know? But that's not going to impact the historical aspect of it, which is what we're trying to steer to the clinic, you know? Again, that's, that's just additive. And I don't care if it's additive, you know? I mean, it's certainly a convenience or other, certainly advantages that, that we're after. We're trying to reduce absenteeism, you know, whether it be for, for, for employees or for employees who, because they're ill or because, you know, their, their, their children aren't ill. So I know there's a whole bunch of other benefits. There's a whole bunch of other soft costs that can be factored in there as well, but for me, I still, I still don't have a clear picture. And again, I know that's probably my fault because I missed the meeting.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Nahara?
Yes, sir.
On that vein, Mr. Carmona and Ms. McLaughlin, obviously, this is just our, our very next step toward this direction. There, there's still a number of things that need to happen. HR is where this, this group of people report to. Some of the questions Mr. Nahara brought up, would it be possible to bring it to our next HR meeting so that as we move forward, hopefully, here with this process, we can get updates on some of that information? And there's still some tweaking. Obviously, we don't have all the answers here. We don't know who exactly is going to come through the door. We, we talked about this at Ling. All I can say is, my interest in this is to improve the health of our employees to the best of our ability. Certainly with that goes trying to reduce our costs. We're at 54 million dollars a year at this point. We can't continue to sustain the growth that is going through that. All of the major entities have employee clinics. In our locale alone, El Paso has it, Isleta has it, the city of El Paso has a clinic, the county has their own clinic. I just found out that UMC, instead of telling their employees, "Go to our clinics," they have several, they have a UMC employee clinic. So we know why this happens. We, we pull this away from being a, an insurance claim and just being a fixed cost, and, and we eliminate a lot of the profitability in a number of areas. So, I, I think Mr. Nahara's background coming from here in billing and insurance, and we all know that insurance billing is, is complicated, is an understatement. It is very difficult and negotiated cost. However, the benefit here is that we will be able to impact healthcare directly and cut some of the cost, and hopefully, get somebody on blood pressure medicine before they've impacted their kidneys or their heart. Get them on medication before pre-diabetes became diabetes and may be irreversible. And I really think a lot of people are going to come to this clinic, maybe, may not be the grown-ups. A lot of us may have some reservation about our privacy, but flu season, cold season, we're going to see a lot of kids. I know at least the, one of the associations mentioned that they're going to really encourage to bring our employees in for their physicals and providing some of these added benefits. So clearly, we can't do what we've been doing year after year. We, we're in the middle of a three-year plan. We know next year, we're going to raise the premium on employees. You know, how much can they afford? We also know that last year, we pumped in $4 million. This year, we're going to put in $9 million. What are we going to put in next year? And if this plan can help at least slow that down, mitigate that, and if we're lucky, like it's been at some of these other organizations, even maybe reverse some of that, then we're in much better shape. What I really would like to do is impact all the people that are going over there to Del Sol Las Palmas standalone. That place eats us alive on, on cost, and, and it, and it's for colds. If you're in a car accident, if you have, you know, you need other services, certainly that's where you need to go. But people are running to these places for convenience because we don't have an alternative. And of the employees I've talked to, they're willing to come. The last point I want to make, which I made to the other committee the other day, but I want to make in, in public. When we visited Mesquite ISD and looked at their clinic, one of the things that resonated with me was, was two things. Their doctor and their pharmacist said, "We're not treating patients here, we're treating our coworkers." So we make every effort to, to keep them healthy and work with them. And the coworker, the, the people that are there responded really well because it's not a revolving doctor door, it's, it's a doctor that they know. The pharmacist knew them by name and could tell them about issues about their medications. Will it upset your stomach? Will it give you insomnia or what have you? So that was very good. And the, the second thing that was very remarkable to me is that particularly our employees that are in the lower part of the pay scale, that if they take their family, themselves or their family to the doctor, and they got to pay a copay of $25, which is what our copay is, they had a similar situation. And so if we have somebody that, husband, they say, one of them works for us, the spouse is sick, and they have three children, and now everybody caught a cold or the flu, and it's three days before payday, they can't afford $125. So they put it off, and sometimes one of those child or one of those people ends up with pneumonia in the hospital, terrible on their body and, and terrible on our cost. And so, I think, because this thing at some point can be reversible, the elementary, you know, Goldman Sachs has their own clinic, we talked about this. Cigna has their own clinic, and they're a third-party administrator. Ms. McLaughlin, you shared that when you worked for UMC out of San Antonio, they had an employee clinic. I think this is a logical step in order to improve healthcare within our, our, our school district and also try to mitigate the cost. If we don't, we already know what we're doing next year. We're raising costs a little bit to everybody. The year after that, who knows where we're going to go? And what I'm afraid is, our great benefit plans that allows our employees to get the healthcare they need is going to evaporate. We're going to be just as good as everybody else. And the folks, like I mentioned this before, the way this happens is you go to the doctor and they say, "Yeah, no, you're not a candidate for that treatment." That doesn't mean your body is not the right condition for that treatment, that means your insurance doesn't cover it. And I would just hate to see some of our employees, if their child was sick, or they're sick and they can't get the healthcare because they've always been able to get it here. And that's one of the huge assets of Socorro. I really encourage the board that we, we move forward on this. This is not the final step. There's going to be adjustments that need to be made. And by the way, if at any point, we don't feel that this is going to be cost-effective, we back out. You know, we, we, the reason we wanted this to be accelerated very rapidly so that we can see some clear numbers, is this working or not working? And if it's not working, trust me, a doctor and a pharmacist can get a job tomorrow. We're not hurting anyone, and yet hopefully, we're helping a lot of our employees. So, at least initially, those are my comments, and, and I hope we move forward because it would be a good step for our employees.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Espinoza, did you see this financial analysis?
Yeah, we asked the next question.
Don't walk so slow.
Don't walk so slow.
Yes, sir. I, I looked at the numbers. I, I felt upon some reflection from what I discussed on Thursday. At that time, I, I felt that perhaps it wasn't a good idea to move forward with the clinic. Since that time, Mr. Nahara, I've kind of gone back and felt that perhaps it is the right time to move forward with the clinic. What I do think is important is the fact that it's correctable in the sense that if it's not being, saving us money, we can stop this. I mean, bottom line is if we want to do this, let's do this now before we fully complete our bond program. Because in about five years, we're going to fully complete our bond program. We're going to have all the schools online. We'll have the SAC. We'll have the constructed Socorro High School. We'll be needing all the dollars that we can for our general fund. And so at that point in time, I would think that after four or five years, if we're not feeling this is beneficial to our healthcare plan and to our school district, at that point, we can shut it down. And so I felt that in retrospect, you know, upon reflection, perhaps this is something we should consider.
Yeah. So, I mean-
Yes, sir. There are a lot of questions that are kind of unanswered in the sense that, I mean, you're looking at those numbers. Can we get, but I think it's important to keep in mind that we can reverse our actions in a couple of years' time. I think if we can look closely at those, at those visits, see if we can estimate, not only break even number of visits, but also the savings that we're getting, we can monitor it. And again, we can, we've got to give it a chance, right? We've got to make sure we have at least four years, I would think, to see if it's fully profitable or at least fully saving us money that, that we think is deemed is, is important for our healthcare plan.
Mr. Nahara, I have a question, but one of the comments I would like to make to you, one of the things that came up is, on the pharmacy side of the house, last year, we spent $11.7 million on pharmaceuticals, you know, and, and I've said this facetiously several times, but, but you can't tell me that if we hire a pharmacist and a pharmacy tech and I go get a truckload of drugs, we're going to spend $11 million. So we don't have to beat Walmart and, and Walgreens at their purchasing power. We just have to beat their profit margin, which is substantial. And so that's another savings you might want to consider.
Well, and I can tell you, you know what? I have been frustrated at both of those pharmacies for many different reasons.
Oh, that was the deciding vote there.
So, so, you know, I mean, I think, you know, I know a lot of effort has gone into this and I know that, that, that certainly Mr. Carmona isn't up here to help the district fail, you know? No, he is here to help the district succeed. Why? Because, you know, the district future is his future, right? And it's everybody's future, you know? That's why, Mr. Resa, again, I wasn't there, but I certainly value the opinion, you know, and, and look to you. Are the numbers realistic? And, and I've heard from you and certainly, you know, every single one of you sitting up here, you know, I think, I think, you know, Mr. Ayoub brings up certainly some, some, some very good points. And what I'm thinking, you know, is, is we got to do something creative. And I worked at UMC, you know, while it was Thomason at the time, but we did have an employee clinic, you know? And if I felt sick, I walked right down the hall, you know, and, and I walked out, if appropriate, with the prescription and I got it filled that same day and in a couple of hours, you know, I started. And, you know, so there's some things that, that I was reminded of. But certainly, we have to get creative, you know? We can't, we can't keep doing the same thing and expect something different, you know? So-
I, I agree. I think it's how we market this plan, how we market this clinic. And, and I know that you'll be looking closely at those numbers as I will, as I will.
And I don't, I don't think it's going to take four or five years. I, I certainly don't expect to do anything better than break even the first year, you know? There are startup costs. I would expect even to lose, you know, a little. And certainly, I understand privacy is an issue, but, you know, anybody in the medical field, I mean, I see stories once or twice a day about, you know, accidental, you know, kind of, of, you know, breaches. Everybody knows. Everybody knows, you know? And it's not, it's not that I'm discussing, you know, Mr. Resa's medical history here with Mr. Gonzalez. It's that, you know, somebody breaks into my car and steals a laptop, you know? And so it's not just, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty significant, you know? It's, it's, people aren't just talking about your medical history, you know, because they see you every day, you know? These are professionals and they respect the, the, the privacy of the individuals they're treating. So, and that one doesn't, doesn't concern me so much. But I think we'll be able to see quickly, you know, in two, maybe even as soon as three years, you know, what's the trend? Is it helping or is it hurting? You know, do we continue? Are, are the outcomes heading in the right direction? So anyways, okay. Thank you, Ms. Resa. I appreciate it.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes. I'm no expert in this area. I give the expertise to Mr. Nahara in this area. And he has some misgivings as to the whole thing, okay? It's not a clear picture and stuff like that, and I cannot argue that point. Even if I wanted to, I couldn't even start to, to make a, a, a good argument for that. However, the only argument I have, I go back time and time again to the fact that we want people to be good. I certainly want everybody to be good and do better and create things and stuff like that. Everybody's, it's a human nature. However, many a times, we tend to think that if we throw this money in there, they're going to do this or that and it's going to improve things. Now, the same people, the, the thousand or whatever that you guys were discussing, I don't know what it is, 15, 10, whatever percent it is, if they don't want to utilize it, they're not going to. And I'm certain that there are other avenues that would be less costly. I don't know in the end if we lose a million or two million on top of a nine that we have to put in this, this year. I don't know, okay? But I think that there's other avenues that we need to make the employees want to take part of their health. I can't make them do that. You cannot make them do that. And, and, you know, you have to have ownership of what you do. I was barely walking six months ago. I had to take ownership of my health. I didn't have to come and ask anybody else. I had to take that ownership. I had to do the things that I needed to do. And it's the same principle that each one of us, if we're going to get sick at some time or another, we need to take that ownership or just sit down and wait to die. So I don't know, just throwing the money and expecting people to do this, it makes us feel better, but I don't think it's going to improve the picture.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Gondola?
At the end of the day, it's, it's a risk. That's all it is. Like any big company, you take a risk. If it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't. Talk about the Aquatics Center. Best decision we ever made. We make a lot of money off that.
We didn't make that decision.
Mr. Gonzalez, you know, when you get on this board and, and we're up here, every decision we make affects everybody down there. You know, some of, some of us up here, you know, have spouses that work in the district. Lucky you. You know, but, and any large company, any large corporation, you know, you just can't stay on one line. It's like Ms. Nahara said, you know, you have to take risks. This is a risk. You know, this is, we're looking at the real numbers up here. A lot of people don't get to see those numbers that we look at. And we're basically taking a risk to lower those numbers down in our favor, to help our employees out. Because at the end of the day, these are the people, we walk outside those doors, these are the people that you see at the gas station. These are the people you see, you know, at Walmart, at the park, you know? And as a board ourselves, you know, healthy and happy employees make us better. And at the end of the day, I said, it's a risk. Like any company taking, we're taking a risk that this is going to help us out, that this is going to help our employees and help the district out financially. Again, it's a risk. Like you said, it could go the opposite direction. It really could. But again, we don't take risks. We'll never know. And for all we know, a couple of years now, it might get better. You don't know. It might get a whole heck of a lot worse. And that's what we're doing here. We're really deciding on if we're going to take a risk or we're just going to step back and pray to God that, you know, it gets better. Right now, it's not.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. We do have a motion on the table made by Mr. Ayoub, seconded by Mr. Gondola. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gondola.
Item 8D-
Thank you all for all your hard work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Item 8D, discussion and possible action to endorse a candidate to fill the vacancy for Region 19 on the Tasby Association of School Board Board of Directors. We have two people signed up to speak on this. Our first speaker will be Armando Rodriguez.
Good evening, Board, Madam President and the rest of the Board. Real quick, I've provided a packet here. And one of the things that I want to talk about is first, you know, the, my personal experience in regards to wanting to serve as many of us on, on a leadership position, especially a great organization like the Texas Association of School Boards. Back in 2012, when I had graduated from Leadership Tasby, like many of us, had wanted to experience that opportunity. But when I looked into the situation, I, I, we did have a person at that place and I wanted to make sure that, that individual finished their term. And that's when it opened up for us to, to be part of. Since three years ago in Leadership Tas, I mean, in the Tasby Board, I've served on the Budget and Finance Committee, the Nominations Committee, the Bylaws Committee. And I've been, within the second year, both a Vice Chair of the Resolutions Committee and the Vice Chair of the Legislative Committee and also on the Planning and Development Committee. When looking at some of these chairmanships and the experience that I've gotten and the ability for us to communicate at that level of what is happening in the border region, especially the most proud, this one that I take is the Vice Chair of the Legislative Committee because it's one of the most important chairs and one of the most sought-out chairs, but due to the relationships that I've been able to help create with those leadership people in Tasby, I was able to serve that. I'm also looking at the leadership track and been encouraged by several to start applying for the officer positions, which would become a Secretary Treasurer, and then it goes to Second Vice President, First Vice President, and President of Tasby. We have not had anybody in leadership position at Tasby since David Sobelowski, which was 21 years ago. And hopefully, depending on the outcomes of this process, we could have another person in leadership position. You have to wait three years before you even start running for office and that would be after this. One of the most important things, as you all see, like Team CIS, SISD, and, and the team around this whole region is making sure that we will work collaboratively to make sure that we're affecting student outcomes. We all know AJ Crabel's, the Deputy Commissioner of Governance, is the fact that student outcomes won't change unless it's about behaviors. And so working together, I want to make sure that we continue to work together in, in the enhancement of this region. I want to make sure that all districts are representative, big districts, small districts, mid-sized districts, that a lot of these issues that we have on, on the border and, and this region are being addressed. And I think now you're, we're able to see that. We have, you know, the leadership within the organization. Ms. Nahara has been there several times. We're planning and development is pretty much all the chairs and vice chairs of everybody else and of all the committees. And that's something that is positive for El Paso. I want to thank you all for having, allowing me to speak and hopefully getting your all's endorsement would be great for, for the region. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. And our next speaker is Alfonso Villarde.
President Nahara, trustees, Dr. Spinosa, thank you so much for allowing me a few minutes to talk to you and, and seek your endorsement of me as the Region 19 Tasby Board Representative. And I'm just going to start out, there's three people that are, are asking for this endorsement. And the truth be said, we all have many similarities. We're all school board members from different districts. We're all Leadership Tasby graduates. I just graduated in the last cohort. Some of us work on, work with different boards. I am also on the Masba Board, as is Mr. Rodriguez. We all have very similar experiences and I think all of us can do a good job on this Tasby. But the reason why I would like to be a part of this is that I believe that I have other experiences within this community that will make me an effective leader on this board, beyond my board experience, beyond what I have learned as being a trustee. I've been a community person my entire professional career, beginning when I was a police officer in this city. What I, what I gained from being a police officer and retiring from the El Paso Department is a thorough understanding of the safety and security needs of this community. Those safety and security needs are in question today with school districts when you take a look at them. We heard our presentation. We're having to address that. I have a keen understanding of how I can represent the needs of this community, these school districts out in West Texas with respect to safety and security because I've lived it. I've been there. As far as my current work as the Executive Director of the Paso del Norte Children's Development Center, number one, I'm the leader of this great organization. My role as the leader there is to provide services, primarily therapeutic services for children with special needs. So I have a keen understanding of another issue that is a hot topic with school districts. How do we serve children with special needs in an effective and efficient way? I definitely have the experiences and understanding of what the children's needs are and the needs of the families. And these are the same children that are coming to our school districts. And we are having to support them with, with special need support to help those children achieve the best possible outcome that they can. I worked for 13 years at the Child Crisis Center of El Paso, where I worked with children who were maltreated, abused, neglected. I worked with children who were homeless. These are also areas that school districts have to attend, have to look at. All of us have to serve homeless children. We have to serve the families. We have departments that have to address those issues to ensure that every child within our districts has a fair opportunity to an education. I've been there and I've done that. I've been a Director at the Housing Authority of the City of El Paso, again, addressing issues of homelessness, people who can't, who don't have a home over their head. How much does that affect the child when a child doesn't have a safe place to live? How does that affect their education? I've been there, done that in support of those children. I believe that my experiences outside of the Board are what are going to make me an effective voice for all of the districts in our community and to make sure that your needs, that the issues that you have of concern are heard at the table at the Tasby Board. I'm very proud of the fact that I'm a respected community leader in El Paso. I think even most recently, I stood up and I've demonstrated that I support the best interests of the El Paso Independent School District, its children, its staff. In the end, I've lived in El Paso my entire life. I've never lived anywhere else. I live, I believe in this city. I believe in the future of city and this, the future of this city. And this is why I do the work that I do and why I'm on this Board. It's because I live, breathe in El Paso. And I think because of all of that, I think I would be a great voice to be a part of this Board. I thank you for your consideration and thank you for letting me sit through these great meetings, interesting topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villarde.
Boy, that got quite quick. Are we allowed to ask questions?
I would like to make a motion to endorse Armando Rodriguez for the Tasby Board of Directors.
Second motion.
Discussion?
Hold just a moment, please. Who made the second?
Hector.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Mr. Gondola?
Yes. You know, when you get on these boards, you know, you always know there's that one tough decision that always comes up every now and then. And this is one of them because these two gentlemen, I admire both of them. They are wonderful individuals that have done wonders for their districts, that have, oh my God, I mean, it's, I respect both of you. You gentlemen are awesome and I'm trying to take this role because- You gentlemen are awesome and I'm trying to take this role because I would want it. And that said, I mean, it's, it's a tough decision, it really is. Like I said, it's, it's two individuals that I know very well and I admire, so, I just wanted to say that. Mr. Nahara?
Mr. Nahara?
First and foremost, gentlemen, I would like to thank you both for actually coming here and taking the time. It certainly demonstrates your commitment, you know, certainly, we all know that being on the Tasby Board of Directors is, is a time commitment, and the fact that you all have taken the time, you know, to come here and basically present to us, you know, demonstrates that commitment. I certainly wish there was a better way to do this, you know? It would be great if, if we figured out somehow, some other way where we could allow or approve all interested individuals, you know, to sit on the Board, because I agree with, you know, Mr. Gondola, I know both of you gentlemen, I know how hard you work for your districts, and ultimately, I know that we all care about our communities, you know, and, and we're, when we're done with here, when we're done here, you know, even when we're done here, you know, even when we disagree, agree, whatever, we still gotta work for the betterment of our districts, of our community, because we all live in this community, you know? And I just think that, that, that sometimes things like this, you know, only serve to divide us. I, 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 I hope that whatever the outcome here, you know, we remember, hey, you know what, there's always next time, certainly, and no matter what, we're still gonna work together, you know, because I think the relationship that the Boards here in El Paso share is certainly a unique one, you know, but I agree with Mr. Gondola, it's, it's a tough one, and once again, I, I appreciate both, the fact that both of you have stood up and said, hey, I'm willing to serve. Thank you, gentlemen.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Nahara?
Mr. Ayub?
Gentlemen, I'd like to echo what, what they've said also. Thank you for coming. Longstanding, I've known Mr. Villarde since he was a police officer, I used to see him working at the streets of El Paso, and I've, I've known you also, Mr. Rodriguez. If there's a positive here, there's a lot of negative because I kinda would have preferred one of you not show up. But, you know, you all are excellent, but, but, so we're gonna have to make a decision here, but, but the positive thing here is that I, I think it's excellent when, when a region like, Region 19, like El Paso, has two great candidates that are vying for this position, that both would do an excellent job for us through Tasby, Tasby needs help. And so certainly, when we get an individual like you, whoever goes today, I hope neither one of you give up, I'd like to see you again, I'd love to have either one of you represent our region and help represent our Board there too, and thank you for coming.
Any further discussion?
Everybody got a quarter?
We have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Gonzalez to endorse Armando Rodriguez for the Region 19 Tasby Board of Directors. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Rock paper scissors?
Exactly.
So much for a fun meeting.
Item number nine, executive session, the meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to receive and review legal, Level 3 grievance appeal filed by employee AC. To discuss personnel and real estate matters, to consider administrative recommendations for principal position at William D. Slider Middle School, and assistant principal positions at Bill Seibert School, Desert Wind School, and Sun Ridge Middle School, and to conduct the superintendent's annual evaluation under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. The time is 8:17. Really, y'all just walk away and leave me while I'm talking?
I didn't even, I was more concerned about the meeting.
We are back from executive, the time is 10:51. And we will continue with new business, consider approval of administrative recommendations. Dr. Espinosa, the Principal of William D. Slider.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board, Administration recommends Mr. Brandon Rios to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the new principal at Slider Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Dr. Espinosa, we have next Assistant Principal at Bill Seibert School.
Yes, ma'am. President Nahara, members of the Board, Administration recommends Mr. Juan Berumen to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the Assistant Principal at Seibert.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nahara and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 2B, Assistant Principal for Desert Wind School.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board, Administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Okay. And item 2C, Sun Ridge Middle School.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board, Administration recommends Ms. Cartrania Wright to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the new Assistant Principal at Sun Ridge Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I have a motion by Mr. Ayub and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business for this Board, we are adjourned. Oh, sorry, I did just skip that, didn't I? Don't try, geez. I apologize. Item 10B, consider approval of superintendent's annual evaluation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Discussion?
Mr. Gondola?
Not really, let's go on.
Mr. Nahara?
Mr. Ayub.
Just wanted to say, we, we spent a little bit of time, as we do every year, evaluating the superintendent, and definitely for the record, since we're on the record now, I'd like to make a comment that I happen to think that we're very fortunate to have a leader like Dr. Espinosa within our school district. He goes the extra mile every day, he's seen in campuses, he's highly approachable, he's easy to talk to, and I think many of the leadership quality that he had, we all benefit from. There's something in his mind of what he wants our school district to be, and I think he's worked very hard to create that within this district, and I think our children benefit from it, and I think our staff also benefit from it, and I'd like to let him know that I, we all feel that we're very fortunate he's here and he's highly valued by this community. Thank you, Dr. Espinosa.
Thank you, appreciate you, thank you, team.
Any other comments?
Not Gary.
Who loves you, Sue.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub, a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And now, if there's no further business before this Board, we are adjourned, the time is 10:54.